Everybody go ahead and speak.
Oh, God.
Just work.
You are good.
Take two. Good afternoon and Happy New Year. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone to the January 12th, 2023 meeting of the City County Planning Board. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Today's meeting is being broadcast live on TV 13 and will be rebroadcast at 10:00 AM Friday morning and again at 4:00 PM Sunday afternoon. Our first order of business today will be the consent agenda. These are items for which the petitioner is requesting withdrawal or continuance or items for which staff has recommended approval and no one has signed up to speak in opposition. For all public hearings, each side will have a total of 12 minutes. There would be no rebuttal period. Once the public hearing is closed and the board goes into work session, no one is permitted to speak unless a planning board member asks them a question. For general use district zoning request, the planning board must consider the full range of uses allowed in the zoning district being requested. The petitioner may not refer to a specific use for the property. For special use district zoning request, however, the petitioner must identify the intended use or uses of the site and give specific details on how the site will be developed. Items under Section B of the agenda will require final action by the appropriate election body, either the city council or county commissioners. As such, votes taken today by the planning board concerning these items are recommendations that will be considered by the elected bodies during their review of the request. Before addressing the planning board today, we will need your name, address, and zip code for the record. Our first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the December 8th meeting. Are there any additions or correction? If not, it was the pleasure of the board.
I'm going to approve.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That is unanimous. Thank you. Before we call on Mr. Wilson today, we do have an esteemed resolution that we'd like to read for one of our retiring city employees. So I'm going to ask Mr. David Reed if you would come up. Thank you, sir. And I'm going to turn this over to our vice chair.
All right. The following is a resolution honoring David E. Reed upon the occasion of his retirement. Whereas David E. Reed has served the city of Winston-Salem and Forsyth County, North Carolina from September 4th, 1990 to November 30th, 2022. And whereas Mr. Reed holds a bachelor's degree in applied sciences from Westwood Illinois University and a master's degree in planning from Iowa State University. And whereas he distinguished himself with membership in the American Institute of Certified Planners. And whereas Mr. Reed served as staff to the City County Planning Board and Historic Resources Commission in the Department of Planning and Development Services. And whereas he was a valued member of the department's management team for many years, leading the Community Character and Land Use Administration teams at different points during his career. And whereas, as the planning department's subdivision review expert, he played a key role in the development of thousands of single-family homes within Forsyth County. And whereas Mr. Reed was known for seeking creative solutions and helping petitioners understand how to work within local ordinance regulations to create successful development projects. And whereas he established long-lasting relationships with and provided excellent customer service to the development community and citizens of Winston-Salem and Forsyth County. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City County Planning Board of Winston-Salem and Forsyth County, North Carolina pauses to recognize and thank David E. Reed for his 32 years of outstanding service to the citizens of Winston-Salem and Forsyth County and wishes him health and happiness in the future. Be it further resolved that this resolution be made a part of the public record and a copy of this resolution be furnished to David E. Reed, signed this 8th day of December, 2022, by Chris Leake, Chairman, City County Planning Board.
You're here.
Before we let you have any remarks, would anyone like to say anything to Mr. Reed?
David, I just appreciate you always being excellent at everything that you do, also being the most intelligent planning board member I've ever met, or planning board staffer. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Was that a for audience slip?
But thanks for your expertise, great service to this board and the entire community. Thank you so much for your third of a life of service. Thank you.
David, I want to thank you too for stepping in when we lost a planning board staff and you came back and just kept things moving in order and you remembered everything you did prior to that. So thank you so very much. Your expertise and your knowledge has always impressed me since I've been on the planning board. So thank you so very much.
Thank you.
I would just like to say, David, thanks for all of the above. You and I both joined the city staff here in the same year. I was just a few months before you. And I just encourage you to exercise caution because this is what it can lead to.
Thanks, Jack.
I just think so much of what I just read is absolutely what we want to see, what we want to be about as a planning department. I mean, the idea of trying to help bridge the gaps and find solutions where maybe folks are struggling to find one is absolutely what we as a department should be about. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I also want to thank you for being on the other side of stuff and being the person asking you questions as a, trying to get a project done and all yet the help you've always had to give. You make it really easy to work with you and it was always great.
Thank you.
David, I think I spent a lot of time on the car going to look at some of these sites with you and things like that as well, HRC and things along the way. I've always appreciated your professionalism in doing this and being able to take that view and of not going either way, but just getting the facts out, whether you're working with the person trying to get something done or with the staff or with the council. So thank you for that.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, I'll add to that with what George said about both sides and getting the information is having someone in a position like yours that deals with the issues we do, to know there's somebody there with that integrity that people trust and trust what they're saying is so critical in the success of something like a planning department that has so directly affects people's lives. So that's very, very much appreciated.
Thank you. I'll just lead off like I used to when I presented zoning cases. Mr. Chairman, members of the board? I just have some quick comments. I just say this has been a great place to work. I work with a lot of really great people, a lot of people in the development community, some of them who are here today with the cases, and a lot of good citizen board members. And whenever I was involved in orientation of a new board member, I'd always try and thank them for their service. So this gives me one last chance to publicly thank you all for your service. Thank you, David.
David, you're free to stay for one more meeting if you would like or if you want to leave. With that, I am now going to call on Mr. Brian Wilson to review the consent agenda.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, and Happy New Year. The first item on the consent agenda is item B1. That's case W3550. The petitioner has withdrawn this request. Next item on the agenda for tonight is item C1. That's preliminary subdivision number 2022-140. The petitioner has requested an automatic continuance to the February 9th, 2023 meeting. Next item on the agenda is item B3. That's case W3557. The petitioner is requesting a continuance to the February 9th, 2023 meeting. That request did not occur outside of the eight-day window. So the board would need to vote to approve that continuance request.
Does anyone have a...
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we grant the continuous request.
Of motion by Mr. Lamb.
Second.
Second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye. Aye opposes.
Aye.
As unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is similar. It's item B8. That's case W3562. The petitioner is requesting a continuance again to the February 9th, 2023 meeting. That request was received within the eight-day window. So the board would need to vote to approve that request. Need a little more time to work out some site plan issues.
And Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the request to continue.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, the same sign. That is unanimous.
This next item will have a public hearing, so we'll move forward to the next item. Next item is item B4. That's case W3558. Petitioner is PCCI Land Incorporated. They're partitioning to rezone the property from GBL to GBL to remove an existing condition of approval. It's a 3.60 acre site located on the southwest corner of the intersection of Peters Creek Parkway and West Academy Street. This is the 2018 aerial. Not too much has changed other than they have demolished the motel there. There's some pads still there and some futters, but most of that has been demolished. As a reminder, the petitioner is not requesting to change the existing zoning district or any of the uses. They're simply requesting to remove a prior condition of approval that would have limited the access on Academy Street to an emergency access only. It's my understanding from the original rezoning request that because there wasn't a site plan or anything to react to, Winston-Salem DOT has some concerns about that access point because they didn't know where it would eventually come out. It was a fenced, substandard access point that was not utilized at that time. Since that point, it's my understanding that the engineer has submitted some sketch plans to Winston-Salem DOT, something for them to react to, and they feel far more comfortable about allowing an eventual full connection there. And just a reminder that they would still require a driveway permit that would provide appropriate site distances, curb radii, widths, and so forth to provide that access. So with that understanding, staff does recommend approval of this rezoning request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
I just have one. Do you know if it plans on being like the main entrance?
If you would stay tuned, I think, you know, again, on this request for what they're probably proposing, it would probably go straight to construction plans review. So I couldn't tell you, but I believe that there would be two access points. I don't know if this would be the primary one or not, but it would be difficult for me to say for sure at this point with not having a site plan.
Yeah, the only concern I've heard is stacking on Academy during rush hour in the morning. And that's particularly, I think, been the difficulty. So I don't understand why you're not sharing the DOT sketches with us, but I'm assuming that DOT has worked that out in terms of how they're going to turn left or right and all the other things that are going to happen there. So it makes a lot of sense to have an entrance there as well as on to Peters Creek.
Any additional questions or comments for staff? Okay, no one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval. Mr. Uh, yeah, sorry. I move that the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposes. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I further move the planning board recommend approval of W3558. Second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. That is also unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the consent agenda is item B5. That's case W3559. Petitioner is Salem Congregation requesting a rezoning from C, that's the campus use, to GBL. This is a 0.90 acre site located on the northeast corner of East Salem Avenue and City Yard Drive. You can see the subject property highlighted in yellow on this map. This is the 2018 aerial. Might be difficult for you to see at this scale, but there is an existing maintenance building that's an accessory use to the campus that's being utilized now, along with a single-family dwelling in the northwestern portion of the site. City Yard is just to the east of that, again with the access point off of City Yard Lane there. And the area plan map does recommend institutional uses on this site, but it is surrounded on the east and north by a recommendation for a mixture of uses. At the time, that was a recognition of the ongoing existing accessory uses for the campus. So that's why that recommendation continued. And in your agenda pack and the staff report, of course, staff did originally recommend denial. That was primarily based on the uses that had been requested at the time. Since that time, since the agenda book was published and sent to you, the petitioner has been able to work with staff to further limit those uses and provide an additional condition. So I'll just read that out to you now. So the petitioner is proposing that the used car wash will be further limited to a car detailing service enclosed entirely within a building. So that's the additional condition that they have volunteered. And they have also agreed to further limit storage services retail to the internal access-only use. That limitation would prohibit outdoor storage of vehicles. And then, of course, the already proposed conditions of limiting access to City Yard Lane as well. So with those changes, staff does recommend approval of this rezoning request. Our revised findings find that the site does have access to water and sewer with good road access and is suitable for a variety of uses, just like the remainder of City Yard and the area to the east. The revised proposed uses and added condition will minimize potential impacts on surrounding properties. And the proposed district and uses are generally consistent with the area plan recommendation on adjacent properties to allow for a mixture of uses. With that, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
We don't know what the intentions of the city are with that city yard that's back there. I mean, I always, a lot of times when I see city facilities, I realize that they are there, but they may move if there are better opportunities. And I had at one time thought that that area was certainly primed for a push down from Innovative Park or something along those lines and certainly something that would be quite nice, that would go down through that whole area. Having that gas facility there doesn't really spruce it up. So I don't know that an inside car wash is going to downgrade it at all. But do we know if the city has plans to turn that over to other kinds of development? And this would retard that?
I don't, again, speculative in nature. I don't believe that this request, as currently configured and envisioned, would prohibit that. Again, keep in mind Salem Congregation owns the property. They could always get rid of it, but I believe that what Salem Congregation is trying to do is to get some interim use of the property and facilities that they own. Eventually, one of the uses that you notice that they ask for is cemetery. As the cemetery fills up across the street, they envision perhaps this being an expansion of the cemetery on that piece of property. So this, if they maintain ownership as an interim use... To answer your question related to City Yard, the long-term vision and plan in the comp plan and in the area plan for the area and discussions with Innovation Quarter would be that that area could potentially move into more of a mixed use and support part of the park. But that would hinge upon them purchasing the property and then the city being able to purchase some property where then they could reasonably afford to build the facilities that are there, which isn't an easy task in the time that we're in. So vision, yes. Reality, it remains to be seen.
I would just add to that, that this has been an ongoing discussion for quite a long time now within city hall. And from my years of experience here, one of the other significantly complicating factors is not only the acquisition of an affordable and suitable site for these uses, but the implications upon travel cost of all of the vehicles that need to go from point A to point B throughout the day. So there's a lot of hair on it.
Thank you. Any additional comments or thoughts? No one has signed up to speak. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Go ahead. Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed.
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to point out that we do need to, with the motion for approval, if there is such, it does need to reflect those, accepting those revised conditions.
Okay. Which are on the screen.
Yeah.
All right. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that, well, I move that the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, the same sign. That is unanimous.
And Mr. Chairman, I further move that the planning board recommend approval of W3559 with the volunteered use reduction in conditions. Actually, it's a reduction in uses. It's a reduction in uses, permitted uses. You want something more?
It's just the conditions, correct?
It's just the condition. The reduction is okay since they volunteered it. But it'd just be the approval with the revised...
All right. Just to clarify, I move that we recommend approval with the new conditions as presented in this hearing, this public hearing.
Motion by Mr. Lamb.
Second.
Second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. That is unanimous.
Oh, if I could, I'd also like to commend the applicant and staff for the time they have spent together toward the goal as we were speaking about earlier of getting to yes. You've all done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steelman. Next item is item B6. This is case W3560. Petitioner is Second Star Development Incorporated requesting a rezoning from HB General Use and HBS to HB General Use. It's a 6.01 acre site located on the southeast corner of the intersection of Coliseum Drive and Pilgrim Court. As you can see on the location map, the area is highlighted in yellow, the HBS portion, and apologize about how my pointer up. This is the HBS portion in the southwest, and this area is already zoned HB here. And it is completely surrounded on the south side by commercial zoning here to the south and across Coliseum Drive with some multifamily zoning across Coliseum Drive to the north. This is the area plan land use recommendation map. Does recommend a mixture of uses for this site and adjacent properties. And this is the 2018 aerial. This is essentially what it looks like today with existing commercial structures here and surface parking. There's one green here that's undeveloped. The request, in its findings, staff found that the request would encourage redevelopment or use of an existing commercial site. The request is consistent with the area plan and legacy recommendations to provide a mixture of land uses where appropriate. And the proposed HB district would not directly impact any residentially zoned properties. Therefore, staff found that the request is appropriate and does recommend approval of this request. Be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Anyone have any questions for staff? All right, no one has signed up to speak in opposition. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Of motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I further move the planning board recommend approval of W3560.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. Any further discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposes. They are both unanimous.
Chairman, the next item on the consent agenda is item B7. This case W3561. The petitioner, and I apologize if I mispronounce this, are Constantinos Rizos and F. Stratiros Ferantinos petitioning to rezone the property from LBS to HBS. It says 6.01 acre site. That is incorrect acreage, I believe. I'll have to double-check that acreage. It's located on the east side of Jonestown Road between Mardon Drive and Frandale Drive. This is the 2018 aerial. The, I'm going to go ahead and move forward to the area plan recommendation here so I can show you the site plan, give you a little more context of the area. The area plan does recommend commercial uses here. You can see that the shopping center is just to the south of the site. There are some recommended office uses and zoning on the western side of Jonestown Road. And this is the proposed site plan on the left. And this is a Google Images shot of the existing site. As you'll notice, the petitioner is not requesting any massive site redesign. They're actually only requesting to add on to the existing restaurant, add a drive-through unit that's highlighted in green, restrip some of the parking area and remove some of the existing parking to accommodate the drive-through stacking. And its findings, staff found that the restaurant with drive-through and offices use is fairly consistent with how the property's been commercially zoned for the last 20 years. Although the restaurant with drive-through use is a high-intensity use, the existing restaurant without drive-through is also a high-intensity use. This would facilitate the reuse of a vacant structure in a generally commercially zoned area. You know, there would be additional traffic generation. However, there is ample capacity along Jonestown Road. And again, they are not proposing any changes to the existing drives. They are going to be required to provide additional sidewalk here so that provide additional pedestrian connectivity. Therefore, staff did find that the site plan meets UDO requirements and staff recommends approval of this rezoning request. Be more than happy to answer any questions.
We had a fairly well-written letter to us about this particular site, and I think it deserves at least staff comment on why the change has been over time from 1985 to 2018. Do you have comments on that of why the plan now would accommodate drive-through versus what it was previously?
Sure. You know, staff did, that was some very excellent points in that email that staff received and forwarded to you. You know, in its analysis, staff has had to create kind of a balance between what is already there and whether this would precipitate additional commercialization of Jonestown Road further north. And it was, in its determination, staff found that this is really the reutilization of an existing site. If it were raw land, I think staff would certainly have additional concerns. But because we're utilizing the existing site, they're not proposing, really, in many ways, a high... ways, a higher impact commercial use from a general standpoint. That's where staff felt like they could go on board, especially in the fact that the area plan does recommend commercial uses here. Certainly, the larger consideration of commercial encroachment into single-family neighborhoods or further north along Jonestown Road, that would be an additional concern. But that was something that was brought up during our meetings.
So you're not interpreting it as a change in the area plan?
Keep in mind, Mr. Brown, this is, you know, the plan that's referenced, that was referenced in the email was a plan that was prior to this one, that was done 38 years ago, again, at this point. You know, if you look at kind of the history of what's happened along Jonestown Road, you know, this particular property was rezoned sometime in the late 80s, early 90s for a Boston Market. And then when Boston Market went out, it became Oso Eats. And, you know, now it's vacant since the pandemic or perhaps a little bit before. If you look at the uses that were approved with the request back whenever it was rezoned, they only have two uses, restaurant without drive-through and offices. You know, what the area plan said at that point and what, you know, and what the planning board at that time and the elected body did at that time, at this point is somewhat moot since we do have a plan that has replaced that one. And it does recommend, if you look at the map that's on the screen in front of you, commercial zoning, and it does not get into, you know, this isn't what we would call a special land use consideration area, SLUCA, where we do talk about, do we want to allow additional intensification or anything like that? This is on here as red, which is commercial. So it complies with the area plan since they're only adding the one use of restaurant with drive-through and they're not doing a wholesale redevelopment of the parcel. We felt like that, you know, whenever you're kind of trying to balance things, that we felt like that this should fall out to where we should approve this. Again, when we had the discussions as a staff, we did talk about the old plan and some of the things that the plan talked about as far as safeguarding encroachment into neighborhoods. Well, the encroachment's already there. It's not going to be encroaching anymore. So we felt like this was a reasonable request.
I mean, our usual approach to situations that are right adjacent to residential is to have buffering types of things like office buildings and stuff like that. But this seems different from that.
Well, and keep in mind, the existing zoning, you know, it's LBS and the use is there. LBS doesn't allow the used restaurant. But again, they're at a restaurant without, with drive-through and they're adding one use. From a practical standpoint, there's not, while you're going to probably have additional trips, it's not additional impact into the neighborhood because on the street where the access is, there is office transition as you go down Mardon. The impact is on, you know, of further encroachment intensification is back on Frandale where you have those RS homes. Well, again, there's not going to be additional traffic impacts to Frandale because the access is off Mardon. So when looking at that, we felt like that the balance was well enough struck that we could support this rezoning from LBS to HBS. But I believe we don't want to set a precedent of that. Again, this is, we're looking at this in isolation. This is a one-time, this is a request and we're analyzing this. And the request is to go from two uses to three uses and the use that's being added is the drive-through component on an already developed site.
Yeah. And, Mr. Wilson, I don't believe you mentioned it, but wasn't there a fence that was going to mitigate some of that?
There is an existing fence, and I believe on the site plan itself, it calls for that fence to be replaced with a fence. Because it's somewhat, it's been there probably for 20-some years at this point and it's probably in a state of disrepair or failure. So they are going to, as part of this plan, they're going to spruce up the buffers that are out there because they probably haven't been touched in a number of years either, make sure the buffer material that's installed is compliant, and they're going to install a new fence.
Okay.
Any additional questions for staff? All right. No one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning board find the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposeds? That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I further move the planning board recommend approval of W-3561.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item is item D one. This is going to be PBR number 2023-01. So the first PBR for the year. Petitioner is for CRS apartments. They're requesting a nine-unit multifamily development in an HB zoning district. Site is 1.95 acres located on the north side of South Trafford Road, east of Hillcrest Circle. This is the proposed site plan. It's split up a little bit on the top left there for you. They're essentially requesting a nine-unit building in the rear of a commercial property. The front of the property is already constructed. It'll have a separate access with its own parking in the rear. The HB district is on a designated legacy growth corridor, so it meets the HB requirements for multifamily. The site plan meets UDO requirements and staff recommends approval of this request.
Move approval. Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposeds? That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, this should be the last item under consent agenda for tonight. It's item D two. It's PBR 2023-02. It's Fiddler's Landing Phase Two. District proposing a 54-lot planned residential development in an RS nine zoning district. Site is approximately 37.6 acres located on the east side of Baden Road, south of Thomasville Road. This is the proposed site plan. Just to clarify the site plan that was sent to you, phase one was already approved in a previous planning board review. So they are only requesting approval for what is going on across the, basically, the dividing line, which is the utility line here. Let me get my pointer up if I can. Apologize for the technical difficulty. There we go. So the phase two is this section right here. So it's 54 additional lots with the required active open space highlighted in green. It meets the distance requirement. The remainder of the property is proposed to stay as passive open space, so that will be tied up with the development. And it meets fire requirements for the single access point. The site plan does meet UDO requirements and staff recommends approval of this request.
Move approval.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposeds? That is unanimous.
All right. And now I'll turn it over to Mark Alred for the next case.
All right. We're here to talk about W-3554. The petitioner is James Howard, Kerry Howard, and Margot Cooper. The site is 18.91 acres on the east side of Stafford Place Boulevard, south of Stafford Place Circle. The request is a special use rezoning from RM 12S and RS nine to RM 12S. Now, maybe if I actually click on this thing. Got a little ahead of myself. All right. One second. Having a technical difficulty. Doesn't want to start up or have a, had this problem before. Let me close out and pull it back up. Go ahead. Maybe close yours out. Might be too much up. Thank you. All right. This case is in GMA three, suburban neighborhood. It's also in the Peters Creek Activity Center. The property is located, it's surrounded by apartments to the west and the north. It has Walmart to the east. And there is a sliver of a property that's about seven feet wide that's in between to the south, between the property that's developer wants to develop and the neighborhood that you see here to the south. So it doesn't actually connect to this property. The aerial has this as a wooded lot with a creek that runs through the middle. Yeah, this is in the Peters Creek Activity Center. To the left is, sorry, to the left is the high-intensity, single-family, high-intensity residential. And here in the orange on the eastern side is low-density attached residential. This is looking east on Stafford Village Boulevard. Subject property is 850 feet on the right. This is looking south on Stafford Place Boulevard. Property is on the left. This is looking north at the terminus of Cedar Post Road. This is a eight multifamily residential building development, as you can see here in the purple. It's 192 apartment units. Density is 10.15 units per acre. The internal street circulation is three private streets with one access going out to Stafford Place Boulevard. To the south, again, there is a stub that we are providing in case the subdivision would ever like to connect. But again, there is a small property, you can see it highlighted in red, that is separated in between the two developments. There is four recreational areas, that three of them are over here in the north, but to the south is a smaller one, or a recreation area to the south. To help mitigate any impacts as far as noise or visual, the developer is looking at putting a six-foot opaque fence. This is that line, thick line you see to the south right here. Internal, again, internal sidewalks do connect to the existing sidewalks over here. In this next slide, I'm going to be talking about the distance between this building you see here and the property to the south. So this is a side section. So what you have here is the 40-foot three-story apartment. It's about 100 feet, this is approximation, about 100 feet distance between that site and the beginning of the 40-foot type-two buffer yard. And again, 40 feet and that seven-foot piece of property that's in between. So the apartment that's closest is 147 feet from the closest residential property to the south. This is the elevations you see of the apartments, three-story apartments. They're all, they're all the same as far as the size and look. Their proposal meets the recommendations of South Suburban Area Plan Update and Legacy 2030. It does provide additional needed housing units at appropriate location, which is our Peters Creek Activity Center. The Peters Creek Activity Center has convenient access to multimodal transit and shopping. Due to that and the distance between the, here between the apartments and the closest property, residential property, staff does recommend approval of this site and the site plan does meet UDO requirements.
Thank you. Are there any comments for staff?
Did the staff have any concern that all of the activity areas were sort of lopsided on this, that the other four buildings would have to walk all the way around to access activities and it wasn't distributed more evenly?
Yes. We did have concerns about having a pedestrian connection to the, directly to the east to Walmart because the transit site, let me see if I can.
Just Walmart, to the play areas and all of that that were in there.
Oh, I apologize. I thought we were talking about getting to the transit areas. To the common rec areas, as far as having them both up here at the north sections, to be up front, that was not a discussion that really came up on this property as far as that. There is three at the top and again, the fourth one's down here at the bottom.
Gosh, I couldn't quite tell on the site plan, the opaque fence, there's still the vegetated buffer part of that.
That's correct.
And it's on the exterior, the outside.
Yeah, so the vegetated buffer is on the outside.
Just to cover up that.
That's right through there. And the vegetative buffer, of course, goes the entire south side of that it abuts residential zoning, single-family residential zoning, which is RS nine.
And George, there's not a lot, like, just looking at this, the way it drains, that pond is, that stormwater drainage pond is taking up most of that water. So there's not many other opportunities here to lay, like, activity centers, like, the site's just not great for a distribution. The stormwater is far more important.
Well, because our building's there, yeah. Are we considering this walkable to Walmart and all of that? Or the sidewalk's going to be there and not bonded and all that kind of stuff?
Sidewalks are provided internal to the site and sidewalks go back out to the public street. And there are existing sidewalks along Stafford Village Boulevard that will get you to the commercial areas at the intersection with Peters Creek. You know, there was, there is and was a desire to provide some pedestrian connection to the Walmart via the, that's what Brown was getting to earlier, to the east. You know, there's probably some, there probably perhaps could be some liability issues with slope and those kind of things. Essentially, what you're going to see is you're going to see folks who are going to make their own path up there. And then you may see folks that will eventually, you know, put in, you know, some type of a stairway. But again, it's not, we did have the discussion, the developer chose not to do it. And again, even if they provided on their property, it would not get necessarily up the rest of the slope to the Walmart property. So it would, it would only go a certain distance because the Walmart property, the developed portion of the property is not right, you know, there's still slope remaining on their property. And to be fully honest, I believe there is a, there is an access easement that comes out of that MRBS piece of property that comes to the west. But there's not really any way to do it given the topo that's there. In other words, you know, it was set up to be able to do that, but the topo that's there and the development pattern that's there just doesn't lend itself to being able to do it.
Well, I mean, part of my reaction is Winston-Salem being ranked so low in walkability. I don't know whether that was a legitimate assessment, but we ended up being one of the lowest cities in the state on that. And I think we ought to be looking for those opportunities, particularly in dense areas like this with, when there are neighborhood activity centers or something like a Walmart that makes a whole lot of sense to look at walking, that really would bring people to these apartments and be an asset.
If I remember correctly, from the entrances, it was a zero, around a 0.6, 0.7 mile walk, but it was all sidewalks to the transit that's.
George, that's what, there is a connection, it's just a little bit longer.
And I would, I would say, like, from a, from the developer's standpoint, to do that, just to ensure that little walkability there, to get children more than likely from a parking structure to another parking structure is astronomical. Like, I wouldn't put that on.
Any additional questions for staff? All right. Thank you, George. All right. We will have a public hearing. As a reminder, 12 minutes for each side. We will start with the proponent, and I think the name is Davis Ray or David Ray?
Davis Ray, yes, sir.
Davis Ray, if you don't mind stating your name, address, and zip code for the record.
Davis Ray, 5614 Riverdale Drive, Jamestown, North Carolina, 27282. Thank you all for the time this afternoon, evening, to hear our proposal. Apologies on the continuance. We've had a few different things going on. We are a, and I speak on behalf of the applicants and the landowners. We have this land currently under contract for development and have for some time. We've worked in the area for quite a few years. We're finishing up the Aspen Point Apartments, which would be the property to the north. And we've, we've been able to finish that one up and hope to start moving folks in here soon. As mentioned, we are proposing 192 units of multifamily. It's a breakdown of 31-bedroom units, 82-bedroom units, 82-three-bedroom units, all consisting of eight residential buildings. We will have a clubhouse with an amenity pavilion for the residents and the amenities spread out through the property. More than anything, just wanted to make myself available for questions or comments so that I could answer anything that may have been left off.
Are there any questions for Mr. Ray? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have. We have, how much time left?
11 minutes.
11 minutes, if anyone else wants to speak in support. All right, we would now turn to the opposition. Uh, I think there's, uh, Cottle, um, A. Cottle, Dennis Cottle, and Deborah?
Kelker.
Kelker. All right, thank you. So, uh, the first one, you'd like to come up and state your name and address and zip code for the record, please?
Sure, this is foreign territory for me on earth. I'm used to taking care of little ones, not talking to big people. My name is Angela Cottle. Um, I live in 1705 Cedar Berry Court, Winston-Salem. Um, this has been one of the first times I've had a chance to speak. I've been a landowner there off 150 for about 35 years. I needed to be close to Baptist Hospital because rain, snow, sleet, whatever, I've got to get to work. So I've been, um, pleased but not surprised at all that growth and development right there in our area. When I came there, apparently used to be a tobacco farm where I live now. I understand the need for housing. But with each thing, when Walmart, Lowe's, um, Chick-fil-A, who doesn't like Chick-fil-A? All the other things came to town. I was okay with that. But then when Stratford Point or Stratford Place started coming, each development brought a little closer to my back door. But this most recent one, I'll be looking at my patio and just somebody else's, um, area. And I know the, on the area town we live in, maybe it's not the best, um, services already based on what I hear at night when I get up at four o'clock in the morning, go to work, the traffic, police sirens. So I just don't know how, how this adds to the value of my home, especially now when I'm right at 40 years at the hospital, looking forward to retiring, knowing this is coming in my backyard. So I can look on my back patio and see someone coming. It feels like as close to me as that flag to my house. And as a Native American, I have to say, um, the creek has been what drew me there foremost 40 years ago, knowing the wildlife, that the deer and the hawk, that type of thing. Even with all the development, that was present. It still is as of Sunday. But I have a feeling a lot of that is going to be going away now. So it's a heartfelt and a money-filled object for me.
Any questions for Ms. Cottle? Thank you. Um, how much time is left?
10 minutes 15 seconds.
All right, Dennis Cottle? All right, he is, all right, came for support. All right. Uh, Ms. Kelker, if you would state your name, address, and zip code for the record again, please.
My name is Deborah Kelker, 1657 Casteven, Winston-Salem, 27127. I do abut the property. Minus the seven to 10 feet, some days it's seven feet that they own, some days it's 10 feet that they own. And it may be in probate because the gentleman passed away. But, three things. I know that the board had concerns when they approved the 72 units with a single main access point. You're now going to add with this 192 on top of the 72 on top of the other. There are three sets of apartments. So I know you had that concern. We do as well because the stub, did you call it, where they could put a pass through, would come into our subdivision. Number two, I have a very high concern for the property value. And I say that, looking at the property that was owned, is owned, the seven to 10 feet, went from a value of $33,300 on January 7th, 2020, to a value of $4,600 after it was, the petition was approved. The value went down on September 1st, 2020. What will that do to my home, to their home, to any of the others? Number three, it was addressed, but I don't quite understand all of it. It's the buffer yard. So I've read the buffer yard standards, and I know there are different choices. Will the stub be closed off? With the fence and with the shrubbery? We don't, let me, um, I'll speak to the thing about the sidewalks for people getting to Walmart. Walmart is a regular walk for many of us in our subdivision. It's easy. Lowe's is a regular walk. Actually, going all the way to those apartments is not hard. They do have sidewalks. If we do not close off that butt, whatever you called it, they're going to come right through our subdivision. We have sidewalks that go directly to Walmart. So again, it's all value to our home, and it is aesthetics. For me, if you, unless they're going to, I didn't quite understand all of the elevation. I am down from these huge apartments. I currently don't have to have curtains if I don't want to. That will not be the case, no matter how high you build something. Um, not a great concern. It is a concern to me that it looks aesthetically nice for us. The other thing is, if you take down all those trees, which they will, you leave our few very tall trees in a very precarious position now. Many of the trees fall in the storms, but we will have just our row of five or six trees. It isn't a lot, but they are big. They are big. Those are my concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Kelker.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments? All right, how much time is left for opposition?
6 minutes 50 seconds.
All right, we have 6 minutes and 50 seconds left. If anyone else would like to speak in opposition. Right, seeing no one, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed. Any conversation, or would anyone like to make a motion?
I've got a question. Can we put the site plan back up and look, just take another look at those buffers? And like, how far the, um...
So it's 40 foot width.
So where the buffer, that's, I was going to address the question that was asked. Is that, is it going to extend across that potential stub street that's there? So that's going to be open?
Well, it will be, it will, generally speaking, whenever we do, whenever we want stubs provided, we try to get them as close to the property line as possible so that when and if it ever gets built, you know, that the, the other property owner doesn't have to expend more funds than otherwise necessary. So generally speaking, there, I mean, sidewalk uh, connections, whether it be a public connection, a public access easement over a private street, or any other form of access, is a permissible encroachment within a buffer yard.
Why would that stub be opened? Only because of development to the south of this tract, right?
Yeah, it's one of those things where, I mean, again, it's, no one in the neighborhood, and I'm sure they'll shake my head when I say this, would, would, would more than likely see a connection as a benefit. But the, the folks in the neighborhood would more than likely benefit from the folks that were, that would live here. Because again, if you've ever, the only way you can get out onto Peters Creek Parkway is to go, you know, back down to the south to the traffic signal at, um, Bridgeton, uh, where the, um...
Not true.
Speedway is, as far as a signalized intersection. Right. And if you've ever driven along Peters Creek Parkway, and you want to see someone try to attempt the suicide move, to pull out and try to go north, it's not... I wouldn't advise it. I travel that road a lot. But anyway, so from a staff perspective, you know, we would prefer to see that as a public street. But it's one of those things where, um, you know, as a compromise, we ask for a public access easement over the private maintained street so that if in the future there was some type of a desire to have that opened, that you, you know, someone would only be left to build a 7, 10, 15, you know, I don't know exactly sure where the Cedar Post, uh, road actually ends in relation to the property line. But there would only be a small portion of the stub to be built, or the road to be built. Again, it's for future interconnectivity. You know, the chances are it would never get built unless the neighborhood asked for it and/or unless as part of a future development of the property to the southwest, which includes this seven to 10-foot wide spite strip that we said make the connection. Um, you know, in other words, the, the city is not generally in the position of condemning property to open roads. Uh, so, you know, more than likely, unless it's ever requested for this to be open, it, it, you know, and completed, it never would be.
So now the elevation there, there's not, as far as the ground level elevation, it's pretty flat across there. It's just the height, the, the buildings are not on top of hill there.
Correct, I mean, the...
Barely level grade across.
The relative elevation between the subdivision to the south and this subject property is relatively flat.
And that's from 1657. So it's, it's a little bit up where the road actually gets to, but it starts to level out as you go.
But it's not prohibited.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's...
Any additional thoughts from the board? If not, what is the pleasure of the board in this case?
Okay, I move, uh, Mr. Chairman, I move the planning board to find that their request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposedes? That is unanimous.
And Mr. Chairman, I further move the planning board require, recommend approval of W 3554.
No motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs for approval. Any further discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposition? None, that is unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the board, I believe that leaves us with just the staff report. And for that, I'm going to first of all turn to Kirk, who will give a brief preview of your first work session of 2023, which will be two weeks from today.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, we have three items scheduled for work session as of this point. The first is Amy Crum is going to give the board an update on the comp plan and what staff has done to move that forward since the, uh, the last work session that we had, I guess in October it was. Second item is, we're going to be discussing a text amendment dealing with a state statutory change to where site triangles can go. Again, this is something that we as a community don't have a choice. Uh, it's, it's a state statute change, so we just need to make sure our ordinance is compliant with that. And then the last item we're going to be talking about is, uh, we've had some staff changes in marketing communications, and they brought some new expertise related to social media and how to best push content to get views on that. And that includes our content related to planning our historic resources initiative, zoning hearings, things of that nature. So we've asked their staff to come and kind of bring the board up to speed on some of those things in case you're expecting to see a post look a certain way, and it doesn't anymore. So those are the three things we have. Uh, hopefully, we won't keep you all too late that night, but, uh, we would appreciate attendance as always.
Mr. Chairman, the, the next item is we'll give you a preview of your February caseload, and I'll turn to Brian for that.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, right now, we've still got the continuing cases from, uh, today's hearing, uh, two new zoning rezoning requests, uh, one elected body's special use permit that's going to be for an LCID and borrowed site, two planning board reviews, and then, uh, hopefully in February, after your work session, you'll be able to hear the text amendment case that Kirk was mentioning.
Mr. Chairman and, uh, and board, the next item I have on, um, staff report is just a little bit of a recognition. The Winston-Salem ambassadors, uh, sent out their, uh, an announcement dealing with their eight superstars. And we have a former board member, uh, planning board member Alan Younger, who was one of those. And we have a current board member, Salvador Patino, who was recognized as being a superstar. And, um, that will be at their, on February 10th, at their annual meeting. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that.
And tickets are available if, if any board member wants to attend. I saw that in the newsletter.
With that, the, the, the two things I do have is just kind of a position update. We, uh, we are in the process of filling, um, Amy's old position and David's old position. And we're actually currently interviewing for those two principal planner positions. At this point, we're also in the process of getting ready to begin advert, uh, interviewing for Ed's old position. Um, I do want to let everyone know that Mark Alred on our staff is the other principal planner. If you remember, we were doing, we were conducting those interviews back in November, December, and Mark was chosen as the other principal planner to help lead, lead the land use administration team. So he and Brian will be, uh, leading those efforts jointly. So I wanted to congratulate Mark on that. The final thing that I have is, um, I'm not sure if, if any of you are aware, there's no one on the board who was here at the time, and there's no one on staff who was here at the time anymore. But, um, you know, we, uh, back in 1998, had the 50th, uh, celebrate, 50-year anniversary celebration of the City County Planning Board. Well, we're in the year 2023 now, so it's our 75th anniversary. And I don't have any concrete plans at this point. I don't think we'll probably do a lot. Uh, just like everything else, we are very busy and we're short-staffed. So I don't know that we'll do anything. But I did want to bring it to your attention that February 13th of 1948 was when the, uh, city approved an ordinance and the county adopted a resolution creating the planning board and appointing the planning board. And their first organizational meeting was March 3rd of 1948. So, uh, in February, we will, we will be on the 75th anniversary. We'll probably work with marketing to at least do some type of a, um, a press, a press release or something. I know Amy has been talking to marketing. So I just wanted everyone to be aware that, you know, we are in our 75th year of existence. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
And I would just add to that, I believe, isn't it also, guys, the case that this was the first joint city-county planning board in North Carolina?
That is correct.
Yeah. May we maintain such progressiveness for the next 75 years.
And Mr. Murphy's comments, does it remind anybody else of like your spouse saying, you know, February 14th is Valentine's Day? I don't know that we'll do much about it, but I'm just pointing it out, you know?
I, I was going to make the comment, if we don't do something special?
Yeah.
We're going to boycott. 75 years. That's a, that's a big deal.
Sometimes it feels like the meetings, you know, might, might, that you'd be at one meeting for 75 years. I don't think today was that day, though. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything further.
All right, again, I'd like to, uh, thank David for his service in the city of 32 years. Uh, that's quite a feat. Um, anything else for the good of the order?
We'll have our motion to adjourn.
Our motion, second, all right, we are adjourned.
Thank you all.